Thank you for the question. Ever Source has a restricted buying process where they buy in a three-day window twice a year for six-month periods of electricity. By nature, a short-term of electricity is more expensive because things that can happen to pricing along the way all have to be priced into that six-month period. Whereas if we're looking at, say, a 20-month period, those costs are spread out further. In addition, we have the opportunity to do market timing where we're looking for a good day to buy, not just a three-day window where we have to buy. And also by volume, we look at groups of 100 million kilowatt-hours at times, so probably four or five towns at once, which gives us buying power by volume. So those three factors allow us to usually beat the utilities by a fair margin. We've been doing this for municipalities and school districts for about a dozen years, and it had just a few months where we were not on the winning side in 12 years.
Eric Cronkewerden wrote, I just have a clarification question. We're talking about opting out. Now, when this, if this went in, does that mean everybody becomes part of the Brentwood Power? And if you don't want that, you have to ask to get out? Or you ask to join Brentwood Power?
I think that was already asked and answered, but I'll reiterate the answer, which was, if you're--
Someone said your default--
Correct. If you are a default customer, then you're automatically in unless you opt out. If you are already contracted with a provider, you stay with that provider.
Lindsay Kleiman, Dan McCain. I just want to say, if you vote for this, this doesn't mean you have to have it. If you can opt out, but give the rest of the town a choice to opt in.
Eric Lindsey, 231 Middle Road. I just have a question.
Do you need another one?
We just had the solar thing for the school, for the next, whatever. That's gonna happen. Will this in any way affect whatever was laid out for that?
The answer was no.
Tom Palmer, Energy Committee, 19th page of the draft. I just want to clarify, the question is Ever Source the middleman? They're not a middleman. They're literally Ever Source, you know, so they have such a call for the billing people, and that they're required by law to bill on their bill as opposed to getting a separate bill from Standard Power. Thank you.
Eric Wallace, 301 Vanville Road. Just a quick question. If we opt in, are we opting for that period that you moved your contract for? Or can we opt out at any point in time?
That's a great question. I would like to go back to the last one. The only thing that changes on the same electric bill you receive is the one supply line, and that will just say Brentwood Community Power. But speaking to your question, sir, what was it again?
Or opt in.
You can opt in, you can opt out initially, you can opt out later, you can opt back in. It takes a month each time because it occurs on your meter read date, but you can come and go from this plan if you choose to. There are literally scenarios where folks have solar, and it could be in their best interest to be on the plan in the winter and be off in the summer because they're making solar.
Motion to move the question. Okay, do we have a second? All right, it's been moved and seconded. We moved the question. We are voting on that question. Is everyone in favor of moving the question, raise your cards. Anyone opposed? The ayes have it, and we are now ready to vote on Article 10 as written. This is a simple majority, and we are going to do a handout. So all those in favor of adopting Article 10 as written, raise your cards. All those opposed? And the ayes have it, Article 10 passes. Okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
I'd like to move Article 11 forward.
Okay, we have a motion to move Article 11 to reconsider next. Do we have a second?
Madam Moderator, before we move on, could we do a motion to not reconsider Brentwood Power?
Yes. So we're gonna pause and do a motion to restrict reconsideration of Article 10. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration? Any opposed? That has passed, and we have restricted reconsideration of Article 10. We now have a motion to consider Article 11 next. That has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of considering Article 11 next? Raise your cards. Article 11 is the speed tables on Pickpocket Road. All right, so all those in favor of considering Article 11 next? All those opposed? The ayes have it, and we will be considering Article 11. Article 11, Pickpocket Road Speed Tables. This is submitted by citizens petition. The following citizens request the town of Brentwood to install several speed tables along Pickpocket Road, one of which will be in front of or located close to 207 Pickpocket Road. This is an effort to curtail tractor-trailer traffic, speeding cars, and motorcycles. Signs for no truck, no through trucks are completely ineffective. The weight of the trucks is breaking the pavement down and will cause further maintenance and expense to the town. Majority vote required. I ask that one of the petitioners please step forward to move the article and speak to it. So first, I'm looking for a motion.
Hi, I'm Dixon from Pickpocket Road, and I'm looking for a motion to--
Adopt Article 11.
Adopt Article 11.
Okay, do we have a second? What's your name?
Garrett Daley.
One more time.
Garrett Daley, G-A-R-E-S-D-A-L-Y.
Okay. Now you can speak briefly to the article.
So the history of Pickpocket Road has been lengthy for very large tractor-trailers because they cut down to go to Pine Road. And we also have, since the high school was changed, a lot of speeding people back and forth going to and from school and that sort of thing. But, so over the years, it's just getting worse and worse. When Wilkins lived at the corner of Round Road, we had a petition, and we did get the speed limit lowered to 25 for a section of the road, but it really hasn't helped at all. And the reason we did this petition was because we're just so frustrated. I mean, the police obviously have a lot to do, and it's difficult for them to control the speed over on the road. And so I've seen they put these speed tables in a lot of places, and I think only three or five of them between Cross Road and the end of Pickpocket would make a huge difference. And they cost, one thing I looked at was that you could get two speed tables for $3,000, perhaps on a state road, they would bill more. But they've installed them up in Fanfields Road in Portsmouth because of speeding, and it's helped a great deal. And I know that some people think, oh, it's difficult for emergency response vehicles to deal with them, but they wouldn't be, you know, we're talking three or five of them. And they're even making the fire trucks and everything have equipment to just drive right over those because they're being put in everywhere, in communities all over the country, and our own towns around us have them to try to control traffic. And also, it's a monetary thing. It would be a lot less money to have a speed table than trying to pay an officer to monitor the traffic and also the wear and tear on the road from the large vehicles. If you go up and down Pickpocket, you would see where these tractor-trailers are really breaking, breaking it up. Okay, well, I think that's, I've kind of covered the idea of our frustration, why we came up with this idea. And one more thing I wanted to say is that when I did the petition, I only did like, I don't know, it was like 35 people or something on it, and you had to have a minimum of 30. But as soon as I got enough, that was as far as I went. And every household I went to, there was only two that, oh, no, there was only one that didn't want to sign on for a speed table. They seemed to be like, that would help. So I'm like, okay.
Okay, Article 11 has been moved and seconded and is open for discussion from the general public.
Dan Clark, 24 Michael Bennett Road. I'm the tractor trailer driver. Okay, first thing, no through trucking doesn't mean what you think it means. No through trucking means I can't use it as a throughway, which I do not. Coming off of Pickpocket Road, I go to Michael Bennett Road, come out the same way. I do this twice a day. As far as breaking the roads up, nah, that's not a lot of trucks either. That is nothing against the public works in this town. It's a lack of road maintenance. It's mostly if you walk, the shoulders of the road, they're either too low or too high. Water's doing more damage than I'm doing. As far as speed tables go, put one in front of your house, that just means I get slowed down, stop right back up again. My truck's loud. It's big, it's loud, it's all. I don't want to tell you. I don't speed. I don't use my engine brake. I don't want to tell you. There's a lot of things I want to say, I can't say right here. I'm trying to watch my language. I do have a truck as well. It's just, I get it. They're big, and people don't like them. But you gotta ask yourself, do you like everything that you have because it touches a truck? Thank you.
Charlie Clark, 24 Michael Bennett Road. I am the other truck driver. And yeah, the trucks might be big, they might be loud, they might be slow, they might make a mess a little bit. But to piggyback off what my father said, everything touches a truck. We might not have the big Walmart trailers that you see, but if you have bark mulch in your yard, my father hauled it. If you have lumber in your house, I hauled it because I haul logs. This is our livelihood, and you guys, the no-through trucking, yes, it means we can't go from the Brentwood End to Pickpocket all the way up to the exit route. We're only going halfway to our house. We're trying to live our lives and do the only thing we know how to do. Speed tables, yeah, it might help the high school kids until they go fast over it, and then you have coolant everywhere because they just smoked the front of their car. Because let's be honest, who hasn't got the speed table in high school? Or at least thought of it. I know what it's like because my parents grew up in the 80s. A little bit. But it, you're essentially trying to hurt the truck drivers, and the truck drivers give you everything you guys have. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Garrett Daley, 162 Pickpocket Road. And this is not about these gentlemen earning a living with their trucks on Pickpocket Road from Michael Bennett. I have an office that literally sits over the Pickpocket Road, and I see, and I work by myself in my office every day, and I see the traffic going by all the time. And it's not the trucks that are just going in from one place to another. We're talking about trucks that use it as a cut through, and these are semis. That's only one element of what we're talking about here. The average speed limit on Pickpocket Road is between 25 and 30 miles per hour. My estimate is that the average speed that I see is between 40 and 45. That's a marked increase on miles per hour. And I also see all the bikers on that road, and I see all the hitchhikers, or not hitchhikers, the walkers and the people, and then with the families and stuff along the way. When you have people whipping around that corner by Five Star Farm next to Peter and Aaron's house, they're going pretty fast, and they're not going to see people. I've had trouble navigating that road when I'm driving in the snow, and I'm a pretty good driver. But that's, that's only part of what the story is. What we're looking at here with the speed table, we're looking at between three and five speed tables along the entire length of Pickpocket Road. That's probably going to cost between $5,000 to $15,000. What that's going to save in the long term on the construction of the road, Wayne said earlier that it was going to cost $6,000 just to repair some stuff that was damaged. We're trying to lower the cost of the overall maintenance of that road and lower the speed. And what will that also do is that if you put speed tables on there, like three to five as we're suggesting, you're looking at a reduction according to the National Institute of Highways of 18%, which would take that 40 to 45 that we see people doing, down to about 30, which is much more reasonable. And I think when we're looking at the overall safety, do we need to have a tragedy happen? Because I understand, thank you. Do we need to have a tragedy happen? Because it's going to happen at some point, and at some point when someone gets hurt because someone was speeding, are we going to say $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 was not worth while? The other thing I would say is that for all the other residents here, we are an experiment because if you want to keep the residential side, the family side of your street, do you become thoroughfare? It's not going to happen because Luke Pickpocket Road is an example of that. So when you're thinking about voting on this, you're voting about your own residential area. Thank you.
Ward Byrne, 55 Brown Road East. Geez, when I saw this Warren article, I gotta tell you, I thought it was the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen in my life in this town. And I still stand with that stance. It's absolutely absurd. Are we going to put speed bumps on every road in town next? What are we gonna, are we gonna restrict and restrict? We gonna put up gates and bars? I mean, I can go to the extreme here with what we're gonna do. I'd like to think that this town is smart enough to not go for this article, which I think they are, in that instead of throwing money and speed tables at things, we correct the problem with enforcement from our police department. That's how it's supposed to work. And I live on Round Road. The past month and a half, I've been maple syrup. Yep, I make maple syrup. I drive Pickpocket Road end to end twice a day. I've never seen one resident out in their yard in the past month and a half. I've not even seen a tractor trailer. I haven't seen dogs in the road. I've seen a few people walking, and I haven't seen any, any problems at all in the past month and a half. What I have seen is the Brentwood Police Department out doing their job enforcing speed, which is what we're paying them for. This is, it's about fixing the problem and stop throwing money at things, to me. And they stop a lot of cars in the morning for the high school kids, which is good. It keeps those kids safe if they get stopped. They learn a lesson. They're not going to learn any lesson if they see a speed table. That's my two cents on it. Thanks.
Rebecca Davis, 224 Middle Road, right on Middle Road. Since we moved in here, the traffic has increased exponentially, and I know the town can't do anything about Middle Road because it's a state road, but we have had our full share of semi-trucks driving by, sandblown dump trucks driving by. Our foundation is crumbling. People don't observe the speed limit. You can't walk or ride a horse or bike with any kind of safety on Middle Road. So why would I want to pay for another road in Brentwood to have speed tables when we're dealing with the truck traffic nonstop back and forth to Pine Road? What about, what about Press Stop Road? You know, what about Hay Road? What about all these other roads that should have speed tables? It's a town-wide problem, and I think before we do anything about installing speed tables, we should do some kind of study or have someone come in and analyze how we can redirect semi-truck traffic from maybe Route 27 to Pine Road rather than having them come up and down the residential roads, which they're doing now. It's a huge problem for us. It's, it's just getting worse. Thank you.
Robert Mason, BTM Land Drive. In my last house, about 24 years ago, right as I bought the house, the paper, we put a speed table. I didn't know anything about speed tables before I bought that house. I thought, huh, it's all right, it's my first house, this is great. It turned out to be the largest collection point of debris and junk and trash I have ever seen, and I was responsible for cleaning it. Parts, people out of pickup trucks, screws, drywall. One time, when I was doing a whole project of shrubbery in front of my house, a delivery truck full of slate slammed across the speed table, and the slate flew off the truck, onto the sidewalk, and did he stop? Nope, he kept on going. He kept on going to his destination, didn't care, didn't care that slate fell off his load, onto the sidewalk. I don't know. And the other thing then was, was that speed tables are rounded towards the sides. That's where people walk and ride their bikes. Cars typically try to say, hey, I don't want to hit the speed table head-on, I'm gonna put my right tires onto the edge of the speed table. That's where people walk, so they would intentionally whip their cars off to the side of the road, hit the speed table with the left side of the car, and then go right back to the center again, which would just leave more marks and more trash because some of them go off the road, things fly off their trucks. So this was my experience with it. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name's Paul Marku, I live at 240 Pickpocket Road, and I was one of the kids that would jump the speed tables. I would do it. He would have fun chasing them. So speed tables do not necessarily work to reduce traffic. Enforcement does, and they're doing a heck of a job. All the speed tables gonna do, people will hit them, damage their vehicles, damage their trailers. I bring tractor trailers, go through. Yes, they do. They don't bother anybody. They're going home. I have livestock trailers that destroy the underside of livestock trailers going over a lot of vehicles. The other question is, Pickpocket Road is designated as a scenic road by state law. Are you even allowed to put speed tables on it, especially since the town doesn't even own Pickpocket Road because the town's never claimed Pickpocket Road?
Town Council is saying yes, it's allowed. You just can't put some stuff on.
There's other things to that. There is other things to that being designated, including no improvements to standards or things unless it's designated as safety, which you'd have to prove to me that those marks actually would meet all requirements for being a designated scenic road. So if you're looking at it, it's also gonna damage the plow trucks, increase time on plowing, increase emergency response to fire and ambulance, or police cruisers. Everything will have to slow down, and you're gonna cause more of a problem with people coming up behind those cars slowing for speed bumps they can't see, especially at night, because once you go at night, you're not gonna see them until you hit them, which increases calls for the fire department and job security for them. But that's my opinion on speed tables. I'm trying to get two more trucks.
We need a cruiser.
Hi, my name is Jess Ollie, I live on 230 Pickpocket Road, and I don't like speed bumps. And all I don't like is people going 60 miles an hour past my driveway when I'm trying to get out of it. I've almost been hit 20 times. My neighbor has been hit coming out of her driveway right across the street. My son's best friend is here on his bicycle and knocked off the road across from my driveway. So my big complaint is mainly speeders coming down from 111A towards Exeter or the other way, usually heading east on in the morning, back towards Exeter in the afternoon. Lot of school traffic, it's a big deal. Right, something to be enforced on this speed. Thank you.
Jim Hager, 30 Virgil Hawk Lane. I mean, I guess I'm just concerned about like the effectiveness of these things because people speed on my street all the time, and I'm not sure if these are effectively gonna be put in there. Chief, would you be willing to give us your perspective? You're the head law enforcement guy. I agree with the person who said that this, you know, from a speed, how effective are these things? Maybe you could talk.
As a town official, I'm in moderator's role, so you're about to speak.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you. Unfortunately, I can't say that I am in favor of speed tables. I'll lead with that, and I'll be very brief as to the reasons why. Many of you have touched on some of the more important ones. The gentleman who lived outside the speed bump, where are you, sir? There you are. So I have a friend up in Durham. He's a city council. He was the biggest proponent of speed tables in Durham, one of them everywhere, until they put one in front of his house. Now, guess what? He does not want it there anymore. Shocking. Ironically enough, I sat outside his house once, and we listened, because they had just installed it, and we listened to all the cars bothering out because they went over the speed table. Nice cars, too. The parents of the U&amp;H kids are gonna be real happy when they come home. And anyway, so he was not a big fan of them. He had no idea of the consequences that came along with being an owner of a speed table, right? The other thing that we have, we have a great idea, folks. You have identified a problem, and you've done what we all do, we're intellects. We research it, we come up with brainstorm, and we come up with an idea and we present it. We're just not to the finished product on this particular problem yet. Speed tables are actually getting phased out. I spoke to the Director of Public Works in Durham just this week, Rich Rains. They're gonna all be phased out at Durham campus within the coming 18 months. Portsmouth will be getting rid of there shortly. Everybody seems to be scrambling to find these, this happy medium on traffic calming, but I'll work with you on that. I just don't think that this is the particular answer for Pickpocket. Word had a great thought. We could have those on every road in Brentwood if we're not careful, and I don't want that. I know my guys will do almost everything I ask them to do, but if I say go travel Pickpocket Road and drive over 20 speed bumps three times a day, guess what they're not gonna do? And they don't want them to because I spend too much money fixing cruisers as they do. So again, I will work with any community in here to try to address your speed problem with public safety issues. Get with me first. Maybe next year we can present something to all of you that is a concerted effort that we can all agree upon. But for right now, I think there's other traffic calming things and enforcement techniques that we can use. So my opinion is that I'm not in favor of these at this moment. And I did speak with Wayne real quick, so he doesn't have to come up. He's not a big fan of this either for the same reasons regarding maintenance, plowing, and so forth and so on. And I can imagine that our chief would be real happy about driving down, I will speak him soon. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carol Gill Leighton, and I live on 18 Michael Bennett Road. I am a walker, and I know many of you have seen it. I walk Pine Road, I walk Pickpocket Road, I walk Dogtown Road, and I pick up trash, me and another lady. That's us, and you too. I walk. It is my responsibility to walk towards oncoming traffic. There's another lady that walks with me. It's our responsibility, when we see a car coming, to walk single file. I walk Pine Road, where there's a lot of trucks. I've walked Pickpocket Road, and I've never had an issue where a car has almost hit me. And I can walk any road that doesn't have a speed problem. It's not a cure to put a speed bump in. It doesn't work, as we've had people tell us. And there's another thing I'd like to mention, I have lived in this town all my life. I am 76 years old, and I love this town, but as I say, I don't approve of speed bumps. Thank you.
Julie Belivas, 62 Lifeard Lane, speaking as a private citizen. My neighborhood, some of my neighbors are here, and some are actually on the board. We have a pool company who drives through our neighborhood, and it's a hefty, large truck that comes through. We have traffic when there's issues on 125. They all love to cut off and come through Lifeard to get to North Road, to whichever way they've got to go. Everybody here has made great comments, and I think that we need to look at-- Everybody here has made great comments, and I think that we need to look at for Brentwood wants and needs. There's a lot of wants that are listed for our town. This is not a need, and a lot of people have made great comments about the speed bumps. I have ran, I have walked on roads that have speed bumps, and I've watched cars almost hit me because they're trying to avoid the speed bump and go around it. So I wouldn't be for this at all. I think that we need to allow chief and our officers here to do their jobs. That's what we do pay them for, for them to look at the students who are speeding, and for other folks in town who are speeding. We don't need this, and that's, I'm against that. Thank you.
Anne DeMarco, 240 Pickpocket Road. I will agree with everyone who's spoken before about the reasons to be against. The only place the speed bumps will work are 10 feet before and 10 feet after. I have lived on Pickpocket Road for almost 20 years, and I've sadly been passed on my own street in front of my own home. They drove by me, and I was doing the speed limit. I would love the police officers, who are doing a great job, please sit in my driveway and keep pulling them over. So again, 20 feet before and 20 feet after, other than that, they're not gonna work. Thank you.
Move the question.
So we have a motion and a second to move the question. We have two people in line, I'm gonna let them speak first. Go ahead.
I'll make this short. The reason that we're here for Pickpocket Road is because we see a danger, and we see no response. We see very few police people on the road, and I think that if there is a problem here, and we get defeated, we have to address that there's a part of traffic problem on Pickpocket Road. And at some point, we're gonna have to deal with it. Chief, you said that you were willing to sit down and talk with us? How come you didn't do that before? I invite you to come by to my house, grab a cup of coffee in lawn chairs, and sit for 15 minutes on Pickpocket Road during the peephole, and you can see what we're talking about. Thank you.
I just wanna say that I have been passed more than one time just doing the speed limit on Pickpocket Road. Then just people wanna whip right by you. And there, I've known many neighborhoods that have speed tables to control the speed, and they have a modesty vehicles going up and down, and they use them all over the towns to control the speed. But the thing about Pickpocket that's different, and we have videos of it, is for instance, waste management loves Pickpocket Road, because it's from Exeter up Pine Road, across Pickpocket, across the dam bridge, across street to go to the transfer station. And this has been a habitual problem with waste management, but that's why there's so many big trucks going up and down. We're not talking about somebody who lives in a neighborhood. We're talking about waste management and sandborne and stuff like that. Really big trucks that know there's no through truck sign. We have a sign, but we don't care. If a regular GPS sensor down that road, and if there was something to deter it, it would stop it. But it's between Pine and the transfer station, and a cut through to that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the question. Daphne did not catch who seconded it, so whoever seconded it, can you stand up? All right. So we are voting on moving the question only. All those in favor of moving the question? All those opposed? The ayes have it, we are now prepared to vote on Article 11. All those in favor of Article 11, raise your cards. Okay, you have to wait till we finish voting on Article 11, though. But you, you can stand there and be ready. Okay, all those in favor of Article 11, Pickpocket Road, speed tables, please raise your cards. Okay, all those opposed, raise your cards. The ayes have it, and Article 11 fails. Now you can step forward. So, do you have a red motion?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion to consider Article 13, hand count ballots next. Do we have a second?
Second.
For ballot? So can I add to the question for ballot first?
Restrict reconsideration.
Yeah, let me just deal with the housekeeping here. Okay, no, I'll come back to you. So folks, please, keep order. All right, we're gonna push pause on Article, on the motion to move Article 13 forward for a second, because we have a motion to restrict reconsideration for Article 11. Do we have a second?
Seven.
You moved it.
I moved it.
All right. Ma'am, what's your name?
Oh, Anne DeMarco, 240 Pickpocket Road.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we are, yes. So we have, we are voting on a motion to restrict reconsideration of Article 11. All those in favor of restriction, raise your hands. All those opposed? All right, the ayes have it, and we have restricted reconsideration of Article 11. We're turning back to the motion on the floor, which is a motion to consider Article 13 next. That has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of considering Article 13, hand count ballots at this time, please raise your cards. All those opposed? All right, the ayes have it, and we'll turn our attention to Article 13. So, before you speak to it, we gotta, all right. So I'm gonna read it first. Article 13 is a citizen's petition. To the town or city of Brentwood, New Hampshire, we undersigned duly registered voters in the town or city of Brentwood hereby petition and apply for the insertion of the following petition warrant article. Shall the following, shall the following provisions pertaining to elections be adopted? All voting shall be by paper ballot, and all ballots shall be hand counted only rather than by use of optical scanning or any other types of programmable electronic counting devices. This shall constitute a return to hand counting ballots and the immediate discontinuance of all electronic voting machines and electronic devices authorized for use by trial in RSA 65640. Shall this article be passed, it shall be enacted by the town of Brentwood immediately, majority vote required. All right. So, can one of the petitioners step forward first to make a motion? Are you a petitioner? Okay, so can you please move to adopt Article 13?
I'll move to adopt Article 13.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay. The gentleman, can you state your name?
Christine Scrabble.
All right. We also have a written request for a secret ballot. Could the people who signed the written request for a secret ballot, please stand up so I can verify that you're a present at the meeting? Or if you are, just standing, raise your hand so I can see you. Okay, I see at least five people, so we will be voting on this by ballot. So you can now speak to the petitioner.
Yes, I don't wanna get in prison.
You, you have five minutes for presentation. No more? Okay.
Sure.
Can you step forward to the next one, sir?
We'd like to. James Goodwin, South Road. We are asking to remove the voting machines and return to hand counted elections. It's not a party issue, it's a freedom issue. And without our votes representing our voices, then our freedom is merely an illusion. We are asking to remove the machines in our town and to return to hand counted ballots with bipartisan teams and cameras for all to observe and record. This will limit our risks. Let me walk you through our concern. There are many ways machines are hackable, they're computers. Computers can be hacked. The ways are abundant and very sophisticated. They can be embedded in the software programmed by voting machine vendors, included in the hardware that enables remote access through cellular, Bluetooth, or Wi-Fi. And I know you guys, especially here on the board we last spoke, we test the machine. Well, what about the testing? We know that the machines are tested in a test vote. Like today, it's not the same software routine which is used in our elections. We zero out the machines to progress the election, which can signal the machine to execute a hacking software and compute the results, and then self-erase upon closure. We know LHS and Voting Works have been approved by the Ballot Law Commission. LHS is currently not state certified. We can all agree that we need transparency to have trust in results of our elections. Using a voting machine, which is in essence a black box, to determine the outcome of our election forfeits all rights to have confidence and transparency in them. Accuracy. The machines are not very accurate. They actually do not meet, and it's in your documentation that I gave you in my addendum, it's, they actually do not meet software engineering standards for database design to have quality numbers come in or out. It's garbage in and garbage out, which is the abstract of that paper, if you please read it later. The Wyndham 2020 audit shows a whopping 21.4% miss count by the machines for the audited rep races. 10,000 ballots were run through four machines, and did not come up with the same answer twice. These need to go, we need to go back to hand count. And I urge everyone to go to removethemachinesnewhampshire.com to learn more. And I also have a question. I found this paper here, and someone, does anyone know who wrote this? Over here. All right, it says here, both the Secretary of State and the 2022 Committee for Voter Confidence, which I submitted testimony to, by the way, have reiterated that ballot counting devices are reliable. That's wrong. If you go to our website, there's a memo and letter from the Secretary of State Scanler that explicitly says, and it's highlighted, that the machines are hackable. We need to go back to transparency, this is not us against you, this is we, the people, who want our votes counted by hand. And I, along with the other people that signed this warrant article, will gladly have already signed a list with our petition on our website to come and vote, I mean, sorry, come and count with you. So we are here to help you, this isn't us against you, but we need to get back to transparency. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, Article 13 is now open for discussion. Madam Chairman, do you have a question?
I heard you say the rat.
He did, he said puberty. It's Scrabble, it's no rattle, I'm sorry. I know you said one.
South Road.
Okay, so we'll turn to the next person.
As the climate 12th hour came up, I think Dick said this was our 283rd town meeting. I feel like this is taking us back to that. I think it's ridiculous, the world, the country, the state, everybody is moving forward with technology. I think this takes us backwards, and I think it's just really sad to live where you think the government is always out to get you. I vote against this.
My name is Chris Stevens, I'm from Scrabble Road. I'm voting for this. Everybody, everybody sees today, we, we're voting with hand counted ballots right now. Why can't we do that in November? This is a bunch of money that does not need to be spent. There is hundreds of thousands of affidavits from all over the country of people just like us, that are seeing the cheating, that are seeing the fraud, that are seeing that these machines are not, they're not accurate. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Spike from Scrabble Road, I voted for Donald Trump in 2020. I intend to vote for Donald Trump in 2024. In 2020, Donald Trump lost because we did not make the sale. We did not persuade adequately. Donald Trump did not lose because Hugo Chavez rose from his grave in Venezuela and hacked Brentwood Smartmatic ballot reader. This is a solution in search of a problem.
Hi, Daphne Woss, Bartley Road, speaking as a private citizen and a district county. Now, one of the petitioners that signed has ever been to a ballot testing. You are welcome to come to the ballot testing, it's completely open to the public. You can touch the ballots, play with them, do whatever you want to do with them. Always, it has come out perfect. You, I'm not sure how many of you actually went to any of these state recounts, because we did have a state recount, again, perfect. That machine, as well as the cards that come with it, the ballots themselves are in my, I have to write when they come in, they are in the vault. Nobody is hacking that little card. So I really, really hope that you would say no to this. These are not up to the internet. It is literally a counting machine, that is it. Thank you.
Tophama, 19 puberty. I'm not saying hand counting is better or worse, because I don't think there's enough evidence. And I didn't get, I wasn't privy to that report. Maybe shame on me, I didn't download it from someplace. But we need more, more information, more evidence to make a change. Again, if we don't, if we have definite research that shows that electronic ballot counters are not doing their job, then yes, we should really consider an alternative. That's it.
Stephen Dawson, Monroe Road, Brentwood. This is an issue that has been looked at. Very specifically, New Hampshire Secretary of State David Scanlon, Republican, has put together a bipartisan special commission on voter confidence, which reported out in December of 2022, very recently, makes significant, several findings. And I'm voting directly from the report. One of which is, the Hampshire elections are accurate. Elections need to confirm the candidates who get the most votes winning elections. Testimony is clear that it's been accurate. Second point, no evidence of widespread fraud. There is no evidence of widespread fraud in New Hampshire. Next point, specifically ballot counting devices are reliable. There's been a number of studies, I'm talking specifically about New Hampshire. There is not a problem here. This is an issue that's being brought into the town from outside. Even though there are local people who support it, I understand that. There's no evidence to believe that we have a problem to be solved here. It's an expensive solution, your problem doesn't exist.
Jess Belugas, 74 Scrabble Road. I just wanna point out that human error happens too. No method is gonna be 100% accurate all the time. And my understanding from the voting process, well, I know that if it's a closed election, a recount is possible, we do hand recounts all the time. And my understanding is that if there are differences, it's usually because somebody filled in a bubble, crossed it out, filled in another bubble. But I would actually like Daphne to speak a little bit about if there is a difference between the scan count and the hand count, what difference is typically causing it?
So just as you said, sometimes, especially in a recount, we have to see what did the voter intend? And it's up to the moderator to decide that. For example, they filled out both bubbles, so, and they crossed out one of them. That went into an overvote, when in fact, the intention of that voter was to vote one way or the other. Those kinds of things are what we would see. And I'm talking one or two ballot differences. That's it, it is not, it is not what they're, what they're saying.
Thank you for that clarification, and I would just say, one other way that we can avoid this is if you make a mistake on your ballot, ask for a new one, you can do that.
Good afternoon, Linda McDonald, Old Gordon Road. I am one of your supervisors of the checklist, and for the last seven years, I've been observing the process at a different level than I had the opportunity to before. And for the last seven years, I've been observing the process at a different level than I had the opportunity to before. I want to say, first of all, that we have just a really dedicated and reliable team in Brentwood that is undertaking to make sure that our elections are, you know, valid and verifiable. And, you know, I hope that, you know, this seems to me to be kind of an attack on that process of the people here who are dedicating themselves to that process. But I think more fundamentally, I'm really confused about what we're talking about because, you know, there's a lot of hype in the media about voter fraud and bad, you know, manipulation of data. We're here to talk about Brentwood, right? Like, look at the machine in Brentwood. Look at the process in Brentwood. You know, I don't know what that is talking about, or even where that information came from. But what I can tell you from my seven years doing this in Brentwood is, our system is reliable. That machine that we use is very rudimentary. There's not Chinese people hacking into it. I feel 100% confident about that. And, you know, the other issue which people may not understand is that on the backside of the election, there is this very involved reconciliation process, which is not glamorous, but it's what, you know, currently Skip and Kaylee and I do as supervisors with the checklist. And, you know, any discrepancies, we're working through it. We're talking to Daphne, we're talking to the Secretary of State. And we get it down to a fully reconciled process for Brentwood. So I don't know what they're doing in Nevada, or Utah, or California. But in Brentwood, our process is verifiable, transparent, and, you know, I feel, I'm completely against this, and I don't even understand what the information that's been presented is about, so.
Kaylee DeVorex, it's Kim Love, correct? So also, have the same role as Linda, so have been able to observe elections for the past four years, again, on a level that I hadn't before that. There are election inspectors. If anybody who's interested in this process, or the hand-count process, like, attend. Be an election inspector. Sit there, you are welcome to your certain area, just, you know, from a safety perspective. And you can observe the process. You can attend a ballot process beforehand. You can engage in the process. The machine is not connected to the internet. It is a box that doesn't, that has no internet access. It has no ability to be hacked, like, and, and as Linda said, there's a reconciliation process. And there's also, at the end, you take all those ballots out and verify those counts, right? There's write-ins, you go through each one of those. Any of the overvotes, you look at and you say, can we determine the voter's intent? Those things are corrected, and those are output as a total part of the process. I did actually go to your website. I verified the information on there. I read it, I engaged with it in an open mind. I clicked through the links to the MIT survey, that was the MIT reference that was there. I clicked through that report, and I did not receive the same conclusion from it. So, that's... And also, as a supervisor of the checklist, I attended a Wyndham audit following that activity. And that was very much a unique circumstance, because there was a fold where the line was that was causing that issue. So the bubble where, where the ballot came together, because there were so many mail-in ballots, was causing the issue. So it was a very unique circumstance, and we learned things from that. So now we don't put the fold line where the bubbles on the ballots are. So we are an evolving and growing process. There was a way to control that, and I would encourage you to vote against this. Thank you.
If I could just quickly, also, I know that the subject of Wyndham keeps coming up. One of the issues with Wyndham is because they used a folding machine to fold all their ballots, which we do not do, and they will not ever do again. Because their folding machine folded it where it shouldn't have been folded. So that's what happened there.
Hi, Kristen Aldrich, from 100 Lake Road. Just want to say a couple things. One, I'm very proud of our community and the voting process that we have and the people that work on it. It's very organized and professional, and it works very smoothly. And I think, again, this is something from the outside that doesn't really apply to Brentwood. Secondly, I was involved in a recount three years ago, that there was a one-vote margin. And when they hand-counted, the hand-count was off, and they had to do the hand-count again. The machine was right. And the third thing is, I just kind of hung out the other night and watched after the, after the election. And we have the ability to hand-count to check everything. And they do a hand-count to make sure that the number of votes coming through the machine are the same as the number of ballots that we have. So I think we have lots of things in place, and it's a great process, and we don't make a change of.
Roger Daniel, Gordon Road. I don't doubt the sincerity of the people who brought forth this warrant article, but I want to remind people that there is an organized effort in this country to reduce people's confidence in elections, and overall, this is part of that. I also want to remind you that you vote on a paper ballot. If there's ever a question whether the machine is accurate, people can hand-count those ballots. That happens everywhere we do it. Ballots, corrections are opted, machines are correct, please vote this down.
Paul Kleinman, Diane McCain Drive. I view this as mischief and divisive. If you want to see democracy in progress, then come to what happens when we are counting and reconciling, which is a team led by an incredible leader in Daphne. I've just been blown away when you have 25, 30 people across party lines all working together to verify. That's democracy, not what this is suggesting. I know there are people up here, but I will move to go to the question.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Okay. I'm going to add a lot of people who are in line to speak, and now we will vote on a motion or a question.
Eric Crump, Old Gordon Road. I've got a question on a motion. It says, "All voting shall be by paper ballot." Does that mean every vote we have at the town meeting, they have to be a paper ballot? This does not restrict it to just the election, it says all voting.
I'm turning to legal counsel. I don't know what they meant, but what it says is this is pertaining to elections, so I would think it would not pertain to this.
James Griffin, South Road. If you look in the documentation that I provided you, the machines are equipped with a modem port, which can connect Wi-Fi, which you guys don't see in, so you'd never know. So that's what we mean by being hackable as far as that. Not as someone hacking it with a computer right off the bat. It started with a person that's programming and can put the hack in there, like I just explained, with the code. Secondly, SOS Scanlon, Secretary of State, has said in a memo that we, 918, that the machines are hackable, okay? And they're all controlled by one company, and the machines just are not accurate. They are also in that packet is a white paper on the engineering, software engineering, design flaws of the database that doesn't meet the correct format to have correct information in and back out of the storage pool on the machines. So they are not accurate. Secondly, the fold in the machine in Wyndham, that is also not changed. They still put that on all the ballots that come up. There's certain people that are in the fold, yes. The last election, yes, yes, absentee. The last election, that's what I mean, sorry, yes, absentee. The last election for primary, for president, there were 27 folds. I have a list of the towns that it was where a certain person was in the fold, okay? So we're not saying China's hacking the machines, we're not saying any of that. We trust our people here, they do a good job. We just want to go back to hand-counting, because the machines aren't correct. I also, like I said, submitted testimony to the Voter Confidence Committee in '22. And we came up with a list, the committee came up with a list of should-do's in respect to the SOS, and they have never acted on any of those things. And a lot of it was to do with the machines. I also worked on Lou Gargiello's recount, and there, and they are, there was a lot of irregularities from several towns from a six-town sweep. I also have done a six-town sweep on our call-up election, and I can tell you there are irregularities with that. And the machine dictates your taxes, because there's warrant articles that have voted on that. The machine is the one that counts the victory. And I can tell you, 2022 was a bad year for elections, starting with the school board, the primary for governor, and also the general election. That year, I know more than I should, and I can tell you a lot more about it, and I have experience.
Okay, so we have a motion that has been made and seconded to move the question. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it, and we are ready to vote on Article 13. Hold on, hold on. We're going to have two lines on each side. We have two ballot boxes on each side, so we'll line up right and left.
Why, why do you hate your brother?
No, I was going to, like, side hug, or something, or something. Yeah, like Facebook, oh, yeah.
Liars. You know, or liars.
All right, if everyone can take their seats, please. Someone left their voter card at the table. If you left your voter card behind, please come up and reclaim it. Okay. I am closing voting on Article 13. Melissa.
Melissa Litchfield, Eleanor's Way. I'd like to please make a request to move up one Article number 14.
Phrase it as a motion?
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to move up one Article number 14.
Do we have a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second to move up. We have a motion and a second to move up Article 14, which is the citizen's petition "Yes Means Yes." All those in favor of moving up Article 14, please raise your cards. All those opposed? All right, the ayes have it, and we will move on to Article 14. Article 14 is a citizen's petition entitled "Yes Means Yes." It reads, "The vote of the legally convening legislative body at the annual Brentwood, New Hampshire town meeting shall be adhered to and faithfully executed by the select board." Do we have one of the petitioners here to move the article and speak to it?
I am the petitioner. Um, I am here to move the article. I feel that it is self-explanatory.
So we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay. And do you want to speak briefly to it?
Can I just ask, Madam Moderator, who was the second to move the article up?
Can you just state your name?
Uh, simply stated, a couple of years back, we had a situation where this legislative body voted for, it was the newsletter, actually, to be funded in the amount of, I can't remember, it was fourteen or seventeen thousand dollars. It was a nominal amount. Um, it was voted on by the legislative body, it was legally voted on, and this board chose not to adhere to that vote and just simply dismiss it. Um, it is New Hampshire state law that if we were to vote no on something, that they must adhere to it. And I was really disappointed to watch during their select board meetings that they, they kind of laughed it off and just said, look, we don't have to do it. Yes doesn't mean yes. When I went ahead and put this warrant article through, um, it was the same reaction, kind of like, well, what if they asked us to do something absurd or illegal? We don't have to do it, this is really ridiculous. And simply, it was a little offensive that this legislative body would ask them to do something silly. It's not like I'm sitting here saying, I want Brentwood to buy two million dollars' worth of cannabis. We're asking them to adhere to anything that this legislative body has legally asked them and directed them to do. They have been voted in by us. Thank you.
Okay, Article 14 is open for discussion.
Hi, Kaylee Devora. Um, I was just wondering if legal counsel could speak to this and like what the impact of it is and like whether that is, can be legally binding? I mean, obviously, yeah, that.
I do not believe this is a legally binding article because there is no statutory authority for such an article.
Eric Trump, Paul Gordon-Rod. I'm speaking for this article, and one of the reasons I am is it came up as a newsletter where we voted to fund it, and it wasn't funded. And this past year, if you look on page 24 of the newsletter, the amphitheater was tabled last year. Coming back for the library was tabled, come back to the town for discussion and approval to spend money, to select and when it hasn't spent money. They knew the town still had made up their mind, I think, that the expenditures like that should be decided by this body. And the body said we wanted more information. Bring it back this year, and it'll be a yes or no vote. I'm not speaking one way or the other for that project, just the process of which the project was funded. The town didn't fund it, wanted more information, and the select board gave it to a man.
Madam Moderator, could I make a point of clarification? I've heard mentioned multiple times during today's meeting that the select board did not fund the Brentwood newsletter the last time it was warranted. That is 100% false. The last time it was on the warrant, it was to fund the newsletter for 2022. The newsletter was in fact funded for the entire year of 2022. And at the end of 2022, the decision was made not to fund the newsletter for 2023. There was no warrant last year for the newsletter, and it was not funded. So the repeated talking point that has been said about us not funding the newsletter, there were multiple discussions, it came to a vote. That vote was to fund the newsletter through 2022. And so the point that is being said repeatedly is not factually accurate.
Jim Broles, Scrabble World, petition to have this under ballot.
So can the five people who signed the petition just stand up and raise your hand so that I know you're present? Can you just raise your hands, because there are some people standing, thank you. Okay, I count five.
Seeing as this doesn't have a legal binding, I'd like to move the question.
I have a motion to move the question, nobody is in line, do I have a second? Okay, we are voting on moving the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Let me just make sure that the ballot clerks are ready for us to proceed to the secret ballot. And they are not. Yeah, so we can, um, take a five-minute break so that they can get ready so we can vote on it. It's not an amendment, it's if five people sign a request for a ballot vote, we have to have a ballot vote. So. Um, go ahead.
I do have a point of order. It was just mentioned that this is non-binding. We as the legislative body make a decision, and that's non-binding? Could anybody explain why we're even here then? For any vote?
Again, as a general rule, warrant articles are authority to do something, not obligations to do something. As a second general rule, warrant articles have to be based in some sort of statutory authority. So, A, it's authority to do "Yes Means Yes," not obligation to do "Yes Means Yes." And B, I'm not aware of any statutory authority that would support this warrant article.
Hi, Michael Lester, 20 elected lane. Just wanted to ask, earlier I thought you said that the select group people could reduce the amount spent. But I heard somebody over here saying that it was a situation where the select group people spent more than was allowed. Can you explain that?
So, there are occasions when the town needs to overspend the bottom-line budget. In those situations, there are two routes you can go. One, you can go to DRA and ask for permission to overspend the bottom-line budget if it's an emergency. Or two, you can go to court and ask for permission to hold a special town meeting to raise appropriate.
Just for point of clarification, the bottom-line budget was never overspent.
I can start too, I think, the question that came up about the library. So when the library was presented here last year, it was tabled, and most of the comments were that they did not feel that the project was complete enough with enough of a firm bottom line for the town to move forward with funding. So that was tabled, meaning no action was taken by the town. In the past calendar year, that process moved forward significantly to the point that a firm number was come up with, and the library was able to fundraise, came to us with money that they had fundraised, and the select board decided to fund that project with ARPA funds that came from the COVID relief package. And so we did not use appropriated taxpayer money for that project, and it was not a violation of what the town had decided because the town had just tabled it for a future decision, and the select board elected to make that decision.
Also, there was an incredible, incredible donor who supplied in large part the funds from, as a charitable gift, which was really quite incredible. So when we had that on the table, which was funding in large part the project, it really became a no-brainer, given what we were handed, just really an incredible act of generosity. I'd just like to say that as well.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Can we move on with another warrant article while we're waiting, or do we have to wait? Okay. They tell me they're close. I do not have funny stories like Mr. Campbell. At least not that I'm yet willing to share, maybe after a couple of years. Okay, we have the results from Article 13. The yes votes were 53, the no votes were 131. Article 13 fails. Motion? All right, I have a motion to restrict reconsideration, do I have a second? We are voting on whether to restrict reconsideration on Article 13 for hand counts. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it, we have restricted reconsideration on hand counts. We can slowly proceed to the ballot boxes so that they have a second to get organized. Again, two lines on each side, please, and return to your seat once you've voted. I still don't run the election. So, if you're a reminder, you can sit back to your seat once you've voted, please. All right, I am closing voting on Article 14. And we're now going to go all the way back to Article 3. So Article 3 is recommended by the select board and the Budget Committee to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $180,000 to be added to the following existing capital reserve funds. The CRF Information Systems Hardware, $30,000. The CRF Revaluation, $25,000. The CRF Maintenance of Town Buildings, $50,000. The CRF Fire Vehicles, $50,000. The CRF Maintenance of Town Owned Bridges, $25,000. And I should have said, CRF means Capital Reserve Fund, for anyone who did not know. Um, so do we have a motion from the select board? All right, the article has been moved and seconded. The select board will have an opportunity to speak to it.
I think everyone will be happy that we lumped these five together so we don't have five separate votes on this. So this will be one vote. And the idea is, and I think it was mentioned earlier by Julie, in terms of needs versus those things that are otherwise desires. These are those things that really ought to be considered needs for the town. We're talking about putting monies aside into separate capital reserve funds for these items. Fire, in terms of a truck that's going to be needed shortly. Reevaluation, for the assessment that's going to need to be done in 2025. Technology issues, in terms of making sure that we're up to date on our information technology. Although we, I don't believe we have any bridges that's on the red list. It's for maintenance and continuing to service the bridges that are in town, and also maintenance of town buildings. So if you remember, there was some prize last time around in terms of equipment that ended up being a very high-ticket item. So the whole idea of putting these monies into separate capital reserves is so that we have the monies budgeted over a period of time for those things that are needs. And I think that's kind of all I could really say on it.
Mr. Mitchell, on behalf of the Budget Committee?
To our operating budget, we need to add the town warrant article. Our capital improvements program was a guide for the warrant articles. All the warrant article amounts are going into forward-looking capital reserve funds. They reduced twenty-six percent from the prior year. So what is in these recommended warrant articles? I'm going to try to pull up slide number nine. Which I may not be able to do, so we'll keep going. The warrant articles grouped here are similar to past items approved readily by the voters, combined here to consume less time in this meeting. Obviously, we didn't coordinate what we had to say here, but, uh... This slide represents forty-seven percent of our recommended warrant article cost. Starting with the larger items, maintenance of town buildings at fifty thousand is saving toward replacement of BRC windows and furnace plus other maintenance. Fire at fifty thousand is pursuing a grant for a tanker with aerial capability. At one point five million, if there is no grant, there will probably be no truck. This capital reserve fund will also support other fire vehicles. IT hardware at thirty thousand is saving for computers and laptops needing replacement about every five years. Revaluation at twenty-five thousand is by contract. Maintenance of town bridges at twenty-five thousand is only enough for an engineering study if needed. The Budget Committee recommends voting in favor of these contributions to capital reserve funds.
So Article three has now been moved and seconded and spoken to and is open for debate or discussion.
Liz, refer you, uh, Seth, I'll just be really brief. I thought it was weird to have the fire vehicle in here, uh, but I was told that I can't take it out and make it like three A. It's not allowed. So I just asked the Select Board if they're going to do this in the future, that they, um, try to be more careful in what they put in a mul-, you know, in a big, convoluted one article. And, uh, I move the question.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the question, but I'm going to push pause on that because we have results from Article 14. Uh, the results from Article 14 are sixty-nine yes votes and eighty-two no votes. So Article 14 fails. We have a motion to restrict reconsideration that has been made and seconded. So we are voting on that. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration, raise your cards. All those opposed? The ayes have it, and we have restricted reconsideration on Article 14. So now I'm going to turn back to Article three. We have a motion to move the question that has been made and seconded. All those in favor of moving the question? All those opposed? The ayes have it. So we are now going to vote on Article three. All those in favor of adopting Article three, move, raise your hands. All those opposed? Article three passes. Uh, we have a motion to restrict reconsideration and a second. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration? All those opposed? We have restricted reconsideration on Article three. We are now moving on to Article four. Article four is a capital reserve fund for a police facility. It is recommended by the Select Board and the Budget Committee to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to be added to the existing police facility capital reserve fund. A majority vote is required. Do I have a motion?
Move. Second.
All right, um, Article four has been moved and seconded, and the Select Board has an opportunity to speak to it.
Uh, as you know, our police facility is, has been in some state of disrepair for a very long time, uh, and, uh, it's a, it's a privilege to be moving on this article and the next article forward for your consideration. This article is to be used for design and engineering. The fund was established in 2020 for design and construction of a new police facility. And the current balance, uh, as it stands today, is a hundred eleven thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty-six cents.
Mr. Mitchell, for the Budget Committee?
Yeah, this article is recommended by the Select Committee. Twenty-five thousand dollars towards planning a new police facility.
Okay, Article four is open for discussion and debate.
Jim Broll, Scrabble World, I'd like to amend this, but I'll pass it to table it. Is that technically feasible?
I think there's a moderator rule that's relevant here. Of who can make a motion to table. Let me just consult the rules. All right, so motions to table an article will only be accepted or recognized by the moderator if the motion is made by the article's sponsor. You can overrule the moderator's rule if you wish.
Sure.
So yeah, but, so a motion to overrule the moderator's rule on tabling this article. All those in favor? Need a second? Oh yeah, is there a second? Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay.
Instead, may I, um, amend this budget to one dollar?
You have to submit the motion to amend in writing, but yes, you're right.
I'm going to do that.
Is there a second for that?
Okay.
Okay. So now we're discussing the motion to amend that has been made and seconded. Uh, does anyone want to be heard on the motion to amend? He wants, I'm sorry, the motion on the floor is a motion to amend Article four to reduce it from twenty-five thousand dollars to one dollar. You may.
My name is Mark Kennedy, uh, Presto. I'm not in favor of this amendment at all. As a matter of fact, I'm not even in, in favor of twenty-five. It probably should be more like forty thousand, to be quite honest. It's been a lo-, long time that we've had that police department, and it desperately needs to be updated and upgraded. We'll stick with the twenty-five thousand for now. I think that's a, uh, a middle ground, I think, that we all can, you know, thank you.
Uh, Gabby Kelly, no happily, I move the question. The amendment?
Okay. Um, there was one person, and did you want to speak? Jessica? Can you, Jim, you can bring your written motion up for us.
I'd also like to speak as well.
I don't know if it needs to be for the amendment, per se, but I just wanted to get more information about where the process for this new police facility is, like, currently. I know we've been raising money for it incrementally over time, but like, do we, is there any long-term plan? I'm just curious how the money's going to be used in the end. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Uh, where we are, we do have a building committee. Okay, it's made up of, uh, obviously, myself, a couple of my officers, some community members and community leaders, uh, as well as those folks that are leaders in the industry. So we've been meeting, uh, monthly for, well, since last town meeting. Uh, we, uh, have changed, uh, segments a couple of times, and I think we're finally, uh, settling somewhere over in the BRC area. Uh, and we're at the point right now, we're actually ready to go before the board to, uh, ask for the release of some funds for some, uh, engineering, uh, to be done early stages. The initial price on this initial engineering is just a ten thousand dollar. Let's get a plan together and put... We do have a lot of things in place. I don't want it to make it seem like we haven't done anything, but, uh, we did, we did change plans a couple of times, so that's where we're at.